Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the order of this meeting of the 24th of March 2022, City and Nashua Planning Board. Can we go ahead and get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Mayor Donjes, Mike Peterson.
Here.
Scott Leclair.
Here.
Adam Barley.
Here.
Maggie Harper, here. John Cady.
Kathy.
Kathy, I'm sorry. John Kathy. Dan Hudson.
Here.
Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Larry Hirsch.
Here.
And Mark Meehan.
Here.
Okay, so we have our quorum. We're gonna go ahead and move forward with the agenda. Next up, we have minutes. So in the packet, we had a set of minutes from February 17th, 2022 Planning Board meeting. Has anybody from the board had a chance to take a look and determine whether these minutes are ready to be accepted as written or need amendments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion that the minutes of the February 17th, 2022 Planning, City Planning Board be accepted as written.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barley. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And then abstentions? Mr. Meehan? I think just one abstention.
Oh.
Or two?
I was not there last week either.
This was the 17th.
February 17th.
Yeah.
I'm good. Thanks.
Okay. All right. So that motion is approved. Yeah, just one abstention. Okay. Next up, we have communications from staff.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the planning board. The following communications arrived after your packet was mailed out. Case A22003, Site Plan Update for 468 Main, showing some deck regulations. Case A2200203102022, 18 Granite Street Updated Staff Report. That will take the place of any previous staff report. March 18th, 2022, 18 Granite Street, Joe Mandola, Street Construction Engineer, Communication. That's it.
Okay. Thanks a lot. Okay, moving on with our reports of chairman, committee, and liaison. Anybody have any reports to make?
I do not. We did not have a meeting this month for the Historical Commission, so.
Okay, thanks. The only thing I'll report is we did have and did finish up the Capital Improvement Committee meetings and our ratings of the requested capital improvement projects for the, for the city from the departments. That's in development by planning at this point, I guess, to put that together.
At least it'll be on the next agenda.
Yeah, I think there might have been. Are there some amendments coming to that that might be coming? So do we think it's gonna be on the next agenda?
Possibly. There may be some amendments, but it would likely come in some form.
Okay, so you'll see that probably in your packet coming next time around. Okay, moving on with the agenda. Old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans, this case A21-0177 is still being postponed further at this time. Old business site plans are none, new business, excuse me?
You need to postpone it till May 19.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion on that? Or is that, we could just note that, I think, on the agenda, right?
Can you be on table?
Yeah, it was, it was tabled, so we should take a motion to further table it.
All right. So does someone want to make a motion regarding this to table to May 19, 2022? Mr. Barley?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to ta, further table old business A21-0177 to the May 19, 2021 Planning Board meeting.
Okay, so we have that motion.
Sorry, 2022.
2022. So we have that motion by Mr. Barley. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Meehan. Any further discussion by the board?
Just one fact that the case, after May 19, it's going to coenforcement if we can't make any progress.
Got it. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any abstentions? None. Okay, so that passes. Next up, on the agenda, would then be new business subdivision plans. This is case number A21-0012. This is Daniel F. Wyatt, owner, application and acceptance of proposed two-lot subdivision. This property is located at 181-183 Flagstone Drive. Has anybody from the board had a chance to take a look at this packet and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over new business subdivision plan, case number A21-0012.
Okay, so we have that motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? No abstentions? That motion passes. Okay, so we have jurisdiction. Steve, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Steve Auger. I'm a project manager with Hayner Swanson, and our office is located at 3 Congress Street here in Nashua. Here this evening, representing the owner, Mr. Daniel F. Wyatt, he is attending virtually. And also attending on our behalf virtually is Mr. Paul Livisage. He is the licensed land surveyor at Hayner Swanson who prepared the boundary and stamped the plan. We've come before you seeking approval for a one into two subdivision of the tract at 181-183 Flagstone Drive. We are proposing a new duplex lot. The site is in the RC zone, and that is one of two zones in the city where duplexes are permitted under the Land Use Code. The current lot is, or the current tract is Lot 930 on map E. It's 0.327 acres in size, and we are abutted on all four sides by residences. Utilities for the lot, both lots are serviced by sewer, Pennachuck water, gas. The existing duplex is serviced by overhead electric telephone communications, and that's what we're proposing for the proposed duplex. That's actually one of the waivers we're requesting. I'll be getting to that later when I get to the waiver letter section. As I mentioned, 181-183 Flagstone is an existing duplex. The topography of the site pitches to the southwest corner. There is an existing 10-foot wide easement that runs along the western property line, and that easement was granted to New England Telephone and Telegraph. There are a couple of shed encroachments, sheds that belong to Mr. Wyatt. Those are noted on the plan. Those will either be, the sheds will either be relocated to portions of the site where they aren't encroaching, or they'll be raised. We haven't determined that at this time. But they, they will be moved to, to spots on the land where, that will eliminate the encroachments. The proposed duplex will front on High Pine Avenue, and if you look at the plan I have on the board on the right, the lot on the left is the proposed duplex lot, and you can see how we have it facing High Pine. That, that lot is a double frontage lot, since it has frontage on Flagstone and High Pine. The much larger frontage is on High Pine, so that, that's why we, that's why we have it facing that street as opposed to Flagstone. And it also works out better for having a proposed driveway there. The fire department has assigned us addresses of 26 and 28 High Pine Avenue, and those are shown on the plan as well. The proposed driveway for the duplex, it's, it is one driveway at the, the maximum allowed of 24 feet wide. In the way, the, the way the duplex is constructed, the units will be side by side, and each unit will have a one-car garage. The shared wall will be garage next to garage, so, so we're having one driveway that serves both lots as opposed to, supposed to trying to make two smaller driveways and having two curb cuts. So each unit will have two spaces with, in indoor garage for each unit, and then the ability to park another car in the driveway. We did, before we began surveying this project, we did receive a zoning analysis from Kate Poirier in the zoning department, and that letter confirmed that the, the proposed subdivision of both lots would be in compliance with the dimensional matrix table of the Land Use Code, so that the new lot and the existing lot can both support duplex without needing any relief from the Nashua Zoning Board. On the existing duplex on 181-183 Flagstone, each unit has its own deck. So if you're looking at the existing duplex, the, where, where the lot, the proposed lot line angles in the back there, that would cut off, it would go right through the existing deck for, for the unit on the left. We have that labeled on the plan, that a good portion of that deck is gonna have to be relocated and reconstructed so that it falls within the proposed lot line if we're granted approval. And that is a condition of approval, that that would have to happen before the plan can be recorded, and we're fine with that. The, the reason being the new lot line would run right through the existing deck, so if it wasn't moved, you know, we'd have a fairly substantial encroachment, and that we'd, we'd be in violation of having a new lot line going through there. So, so Mr., one of the first things Mr. Wyatt will do if we do receive approval is to have his contractor remove the necessary portion of that deck, so, so that it won't conflict with the, with the new lot line. Stormwater, we have, we are proposing three leech and catch basins. Two of them will be on the new duplex lot, and one of them will be on the existing duplex lot, and will be catching the majority of, of roof runoff from both buildings. We've submitted our, our stormwater study to the engineering department, and when we, we do have some, some comments from Joe Mandola that we're in the process of, of addressing. When we resubmit to him, we'll have a stamp letter for him that our site will be in compliance with the Nashua Land Use Code stormwater regulations with regards to not increasing the stormwater runoff in the, in the post-development conditions. As I mentioned, we do have those comments from Mr. Mandola that we're working on. I've had a conversation with him. We, we went through every, every comment that he had and discussed the majority of him. I firmly believe that when we turn our revised plans back into him, we'll be able to satisfy all his comments, and I, I feel that I gave him a pretty substantial comfort level, that, that we will be able to do that when he sees revised plans from us. We are asking for three waivers. It's, I believe you all have a copy of my waiver request letter, so as I've typically done, I'll, I'll just summarize them instead of reading the letter. The first one is to waive the construction of sidewalks in lieu of a, of a contribution. We do meet the two requirements to, to request making a contribution, and that is that there are no sidewalks within 250 feet of the parcel on our side of the street, and that the lot can't be subdivided again without, on, on its own. It would need some type of zoning relief if we were to do that, and in all honesty, we, we wouldn't be able to do that. This is the only way it can be subdivided. So in using the city's formula, in tallying up our total frontages along High Pine Ave and Flagstone, and then subtracting out the 18 feet allowed per lot, we're offering a contribution in the amount of $9,980.50. The second waiver we are asking for is with regards to section, excuse me, a minute, Section 190-282B9, and that is the typical waiver we, we request with regards to existing conditions and topography within 1,000 feet. In order to do that, we would have to survey 72 acres, and that's just not feasible, you know, from a financial standpoint, or from the standpoint that all those abutters are gonna let us go on their property to, to do that. We do submit a plan from the Nashua GIS that does show the existing conditions in multiple other layers of the GIS within 1,000 feet, so that you have a comfort level of what the area looks like. And the last waiver we're requesting is from Section 190-221, and this has to do with our, with electrical utilities going overhead as, as proposed underground. I have talked to Eversource about this, and it's a bit of a unique situation where the, the current neighborhood is, everything out there is, is overhead right now. The existing 181-183 Flagstone is overhead. The power poles that are on Flagstone and on High Pine, they're actually both on the other side of the street from us. So I did reach out to Eversource just to see how, how they would want that, you know, want us to service this lot, whether they'd want another pole or just go across the street, and, you know, which street would they want us to go to. So they took a site trip out there. It's a little bit hard to see. There's, there's a pole across the street, kinda right at the intersection where Flagstone and High Pine meet, and they determined that's the pole where they would want the line to the duplex to come from, so they would want it to go overhead across the street diagonally and just, just touch one side of the building. They said they can then divvy up the power to, to both units. So, so that is what Eversource would like to see when we get to the construction phase of this, so that's why we're, we are requesting the waiver to go overhead with this. There have been a couple of letters submitted by abutters that have some, some concerns about this project. I'd like to quickly address some of those. One of the letters was submitted by Ronald Distazio and Mary Ann Distazio. I believe they are across High Pine Avenue. Some of their concerns were with regards to lot size. Now, as I mentioned, we do have a letter from, from the zoning department that we do conform with the National Land Use Code with regards to size and setbacks and whatnot, and we didn't need, we didn't need to go before the zoning board for any relief, so, so our, our plan does conform with lot size. Sidewalks, Land Use Code does allow us to, to request a waiver of construction if we do meet both criterias, and as I, I just stated a moment ago, we do meet those criterias. Safety with regards to driveway, the abutter was concerned when you go down High Pine Avenue and then take a left heading towards, go down High Pine and take a left onto High Pine and heading towards our development. That, that view, if you're standing out there, that view is a straight shot. There are no sight impediments. In our driveway would be far enough down where you would have plenty of visual sight to see if there's a car pulling out of the driveway or not, so, so we don't feel that there's any type of sight issues or that that driveway would propose any type of danger to oncoming traffic. And their last concern was with regards to stormwater. As I mentioned, when we resubmit our revised plans to Mr. Mandola, we will have a, a signed and stamped letter by a professional engineer that we, that we do meet all the requirements of the National Land Use Code with regards to, to stormwater. So I believe we are satisfying all the concerns from the Distazios. There were two other letters submitted by the abutter to, if you look at the plan to the right of 181-183 Flagstone, is a gentleman by the name of Mr. Richard Kalika. Both of his letters were, were a bit lengthy, so we had our licensed land surveyor submitted letters to the planning department that went through all of his concerns point by point. We believe we've answered those, all of his concerns. You should have copies of those in your packets. If you have any questions about anything in his letters, I'll be glad to answer them, just due to, to the length of those letters. That's why we wanted to submit a response from our, from our survey. It would just take me a significant amount of time to, to go through everything, so. That concludes my, my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions that any of the board members have.
Okay, thanks. The first question I had just was on that, that overhead electric service. It seems like a really long run. And is it practical that that's gonna be high enough off the road by the time it gets to, to the, to the building there? I mean, has that been laid out?
Well, they, they, they had one of their, Eversource had one of their field workers go out there and physically stand in the street and look at it. And, and actually, what's listed in my waiver request letter, this is kind of a unique situation where Consolidated, I believe they're the cable company, they own the poles in the north section of Nashua, so, so everyone, they all kinda, you know, piggyback, you know, whether it's cable or electric, they'll piggyback onto the same poles. So part of my request for that waiver is, is my client would have to pay, so if, so if there's gonna be a pole dropped on the property of the new duplex to, in order to span the street and then connect to, to the house, my client would have to pay Consolidated for that pole and then have Eversource do the work. And, and the, the cost of that pole was anywhere from like $1,200 to, to $2,000 just for the pole alone. So that's why part of our, our waiver request was the, the financial hardship of, of this is a significant amount of money just for one pole, and just by going what, you know, whatever Source told me that, you know, they can make that happen. So I was just relying on, on what they said after having viewed the site.
Correct. Yeah, it seems like you'd almost have to hit that house like, at like the third story.
Well, it is, I mean, well, our-
Not at, not at the lower level, because you'd be too low.
Right. Yeah, yeah. I mean, the, just the, the duplex actually is, is three stories. It's kind of a, a reverse walkout, and that just has to do with the way the, the grades are. It does pitch to the, to the, on the plan. It's the, the upper left corner, so, so where the driveway comes out is one of the lowest parts of the site, and, and behind the duplex is, is much higher. So, so as you mentioned, we showed it going to, to the closest corner, so it is, you know, as you said, it's quite conceivable they would, you know, connect it to, to the highest part of the duplex, so that if there is, you know, any type of concern about how low it hangs as you, you know, go, go over the street when you're rounding the corner, you know, that can be avoided that way.
Yeah. Okay. Mr. Meehan?
I was gonna note that the abutter's property is the same way. There's a pole across the street, and the powers run across the, so it's, it's already being done right down the street.
Okay, yeah, so it's, there's a precedent there. Okay. Other questions for the applicant by the board, Mr. Barley?
He just had two questions. The first one was about the survey issue, the questions from Mr. Kalika. I think I was reading the, the responses that your licensed surveyor had provided, and I think if I understood correctly, the surveyor had said that the, that all of the, the points on the plan that you submitted are consistent with the plan that was attached to the, the court order that resulted in, in the current boundaries, including the, you know, the movement of that small parcel from this property. Is that, that accurate?
Yeah, yeah. The, the kinda, without getting too technical, kinda, the, the distances and the angles that the distances make, they all work exactly the same as, as one of the prior plans. The discrepancy is the plane that the survey was, was performed on, and Nashua has their own requirements as to what type of, of plane they want it on, so we typically do any plan that's gonna go before you. We, we survey it per the city's requirements. One of the other plans was done on, on a separate plane, so, so what differs is, is the bearings, you know, so, so north and south, just the, the coordinates that go along with that. And that's just because it's a different, it's a different plane system. That's, that's where that discrepancy comes from.
Just one other question. I had, I know you said this is sort of like a, a walkout. What is the, the height of the proposed duplex here compared to the existing building next door?
To, to the existing onsite duplex? Or the, the one where some-
The existing onsite. Thank you, yeah.
That, honestly, I, I don't know what that height is. The, the proposed duplex is, is roughly like, you know, probably a little over 30 feet or so.
Okay. Thank you.
Where in, in, in this zone, I think the maximum building height is, is 100 feet. You know, I mean, not that we'd ever, you know, have a, a build, a duplex that high, but it's, I mean, it's, it's well, well below what, what the zone allows for.
And just understanding, you might not know the exact height of, of the existing building, but I mean, do you have a sense? Is it, is it gonna be around the same height? Or is the building, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it could be a little taller just because the existing, the 181-183 duplex doesn't have a garage on it. You know, it just has like two, the two separate driveways, and so our, our first floor is just incorporating a, a garage. You know, I mean, if we had the room to set it up the way the, the, the existing duplex was, where we had like a singular driveway on, on each side, you know, then, then it'd probably be a two-story building just, but just because of how close one of the driveways would have, had to have been to the corner intersection where you, you have to have a certain distance- where you, you have to have a certain distance from an intersection for a driveway. So that's kind of how, that played a big role in how we set up the building and, and where we located our proposed driveway.
Other questions for the applicant by the board? All right. Hearing none, I will go ahead and open this to the public. Anybody in the audience? I'll start within the room here. Who should speak in opposition or concerned with the plan or have a question? Go ahead and come on up and state your name and address for the record, please. And then let us know what your questions or comments might be.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. Thank you for your service. I'm Richard Kalika. I live to the north. I'm the parcel to the right as you're looking at the drawing. We abut the, Mr. Wyatt's parcel. And I have a couple of concerns. One is, there was a court case that set a boundary. And the surveyor's bounds do not match that boundary. It's a legal recorded boundary. It's also mentioned in his deed. That has been pointed out to you in that the survey does not match those and needs to. If that's on a different plane, the surveyor should have done it on the plane that the deed calls for and not a different plane. So you're dealing with a, a subdivision that is allowing a lot by one square foot over minimum requirements. So that's one concern. Two concerns is the corner of High Pine and Flagstone. High Pine is fairly flat and the water kind of more or less comes a little bit towards Flagstone, but not very much. But there is a drain at the corner, right where Mr. Wyatt's property is, that is the storm drain for Flagstone Drive. And during the winter, that whole area becomes very icy. And there is need for a sidewalk in that area. And again, that's it. I, I, I'm looking at a, a survey that doesn't match any deeds or recorded. What's recorded is the actual legal description of the property. And in my opinion, it needs to. And the surveyor should adjust whatever plane he's dealing with to equal that of what's recorded in the registry of deeds. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition, concerned, or have a question of the plan? Is anybody on Zoom that has a question? Or we should speak in opposition, concerned, or in favor of the plan? Not seeing anybody? Okay. Okay. All right, hearing none, I will, at this point, move to, back to the applicant. So we have one public testimony that has a couple of items that are requesting some clarification. If you could maybe elaborate on those and particularly the, the deed plane or the survey plane and storm drainage seem to be two versus sidewalk.
Again, for the record, my name is Steve Auger with Hainer Swanson, 3 Congress Street in Nashua. First, with regards to potential sidewalks and, and the storm drain. As I stated, we're, we're not doing anything that is going to increase any stormwater drainage in the city's street that would get to that basin. We are, we are more than handling our proposed stormwater that developing the site is, is going to generate. So I don't know that, whatever stormwater issue is currently out there with that drain, we're certainly not making it worse. And I don't know what, what sidewalks would, would do exactly. And as I requested in the waiver, we are well within our right to ask the board to grant a waiver of sidewalk construction to, instead, and grant a contribution instead. With, with regards to, to the court case, I'm gonna let our licensed land surveyor, Paul Liverstidge, answer that. He's available on Zoom. He can speak to that more intelligently than I can since he determined the boundary.
Just before that, can you just elaborate on the drain that's being talked about? That's, are you aware of where that is on the site?
I'd have to go, go, go look at the plan.
You can maybe grab your microphone and go up. I, I'd just like to point it out on the plan. That would be helpful if you don't mind. Just for the board's sake, you know, and-
There's, uh, there, there's one catch basin right here. So kinda, so this is the edge of pavement here on the rounding. And it's a little bit out here. So the existing stormwater drain runs down Flagstone here and then bangs right onto High Pine there. So that's, that's the only catch basin on the plan.
And, and that's in the right of way? That's not on the property?
Yep, that's, 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 that's right in the street.
In the street?
Yep, that's, that's not on our property.
All right. Did you observe any issues with that when you were on site?
I, I actually, I actually didn't do the survey, so.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But, but, I mean, as you can see, based on the location of, of where our, our proposed houses and, and where we have our leach and catch basins. We have one out front here. We have one right here. We're not doing anything that is going to add any additional stormwater to that catch basin or create any ponding in that area.
Would it be accurate to say that the stormwater devices that you're putting on the site could potentially improve the situation? I mean, the way you looked at the site, was, would there have been some potentially coming off?
Uh, I mean, it, it, it is, I mean, the, the contours here, I mean, they do pitch in that direction. And what we're doing with this leach and catch basin. So we have this designed to catch roof runoff underground through a piping system here and here. But we've also, we're also grading a small depression area here. So in this front corner, we're kind of, we're basically making a little pocket so that any stormwater that comes off our grass from the top of the hill here, it, it will get to this pocket here and then go right into our, our leach and catch basin. So we are, so we are preventing anything that would flow off the grass and head towards the street by creating a detention area here which, which will catch that. So, so in essence, we are preventing anything getting from our site to the street, which, which it does, it does pitch that way now because of the contours.
Okay, thanks. I just had, does the board have any questions regarding stormwater before we get to talking about that?
Not, yeah, not stormwater. And you, Steve, you can let me know whether you want the surveyor to answer this question. But I just, I just wanted to confirm this. When Mr. Kalika made reference to it and I also saw it in his letter, where he's describing the, the newly created lot and the, the two newly created lots as being, you know, just very marginally over the minimum lot size requirement. I think he, he made reference to, to like one square foot or something. I'm just looking at the plan and it's a little hard to read the numbers with the size. But it looks to, to me like both lots would be well over the minimum required size. So I'm just wondering if you can confirm that.
I, I, I think that the, the existing, the, the lot that would have the existing duplex, actually, can, can I just approach the board again?
Yeah, sure. Can you bring the mic? Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so, so Lot 930, which would, would be the, the existing duplex, that, that will be well over, that'll be over by a few hundred square feet of what you need for, for a duplex. And the new lot will be exactly what we need for, for a duplex.
Okay.
And, and, and that was stated in the letter that I mentioned that we got from the zoning department. So, you know, it, it's, it's right on with the square footage that we need for a duplex.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Alderman?
Kathy? Just for clarification, right on means no, you're right on the number, no room up or down?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions on the stormwater site? Okay. Yeah, if you want to have your surveyor respond to this, this discrepancy in the, the planes of the surveys being discussed, that would be good.
Paul, can you just, just state your name and, and address for the record? And then discuss the, the survey questions?
Yes. Good evening, my name is Paul Liverstidge. I am a licensed land surveyor with Hainer Swanson. A little bit briefly about myself. I have over 40 years' experience surveying land. I've been with Hainer Swanson for a number of years now. And we pride ourselves on both the quality and correctness of, of the work we provide. And I can absolutely assure you that this plan is, is correct. I think the misunderstanding-
Sorry, just real quick, could you, we have a little bit of background noise in here. Could you speak a little louder than normal? Yeah, that'd be great.
Sure, okay, my apologies. Did you, did you get, you got my introduction? My name is Paul Liverstidge. I'm a licensed land surveyor with Hainer Swanson. Over 40 years' experience. Take a great deal of pride in my work, as the company does. And we want to assure correctness and a, and a quality product. And I assure you that, that this plan is correct. I believe what the misunderstanding here is, is all revolving around the bearing system that's utilized on the plan. And basically, it appears, although it's not cited on the record plans, that the record subdivision plan, as well as the plan that was done and presented to the court, were based on the same bearing system. And that bearing system looks as if it was a magnetic observation, probably done back when the survey was done for the subdivision plan. And historically, that is very common in older surveys. In today's day and age, we use GPS and we put sites on a horizontal and vertical plane that is able to be reestablished quickly by other surveyors. Kind of ties everything together. So in doing so, we generate bearings on that system. And that's what we publish on new surveys. Any new subdivision plans, any new site plans that get presented to the city are almost always on that system. The system is NAD 83. And the projection is New Hampshire State Plane. New Hampshire State Plane Bearing System is a grid bearing system. It's very close to what you would consider true north. It's actually grid north, but, but very close to true north. And magnetic bearing system, today, it varies by about 14 and a half degrees to the west. The bearing system that the plan is prepared on has, no pun intended, no bearing on the location of the lines on the ground. As land surveyors, what we do is we calculate the angles, the angular relationship between adjacent lines and determine the boundaries in that fashion, along with the monuments we recover and the distances along the lines. If you look at the plan that we have presented here and you compare it to the plan that was submitted with the court decree, the angular relationship between all of the lines is exactly the same, as are the distances. The only difference here is the north orientation. And also, just as additional to that, the coordinate system which creates the bearing system that this is prepared on is what is required by the city of Nashua. And it's the same system that gets brought into their GIS. So this way, when we provide the city with a plan, they can drop it into the GIS system. And it drops right in. It's also the preferred method for surveys in the state from the, the land standards for land surveyors. The preferred system is the state plane coordinate system when possible. I, I, is there any additional questions on, on this matter?
Anybody from the board have any questions for the surveyor here? Mr. Hurst?
Chairman? What is, what is the actual different differential between two planes? Is it in a matter of number of feet? Is it a significant number?
It, it's, it's, it's an angular, it's, it's an angular difference. Magnetic north is, today, I believe it's about 14 and a half degrees west of, of grid north or true north. Which means if you're, if you're standing, if you're standing in Nashua and you were looking, if you were, you were facing actual true north, you'd have to turn, you'd have to turn contra-clockwise about 14 degrees and that would be mag, magnetic north. You know, when I was in school quite some time ago, they said magnetic north is somewhere around Hudson Bay. That's where you're actually looking. It's what you see when you drop a compass needle. That's, that's magnetic north.
So what's the actual difference in terms of the surveys? Is it, is it moving clockwise?
You asking in square footage?
Yeah. Square footage, however you might refer to it.
What's the difference in square footage?
On, on the, on the bearing systems?
No, on this particular plan, the, the, the contention is there's not enough square footage. So what is the, the, the abutter is saying it's a certain square footage. Your survey is saying it's a different square footage. What is the difference between those two?
Oh, I would have to, I would have to calculate any difference up from his. But these property lines and bearings are, are this, they define the exact same geometrical shape as his plan. So they should be the same. It is, is a big area of contention is that the bearings read differently than the bearings read on the plan that was submitted to the court. But again, the bearings do not define the lot lines. The mathematical relationship between the bearings defines the lot lines. So the, the, the lot that's prevent, presented here is the same lot that's shown on the, the plan of the court decree.
So would it be accurate to describe it as, if I were to just take this plan that's on the wall here and rotate the whole entire plan 14 degrees, that's the difference?
Exactly.
So it's the same plan, same areas, same things?
Just a rotation.
It's just the, so rotate the world 14 degrees.
Does there, does there no impact then?
Correct.
Not on the ground. It's just how it, like I said, just take that plan and turn that whole plan 14 degrees. It doesn't affect any of the areas. It's just how you call up.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
Yeah.
That, that, that is correct. That is correct. And the system that we are on is the system that's utilized today for modern surveys.
Got it.
We, we don't, we don't go out to, we don't go out in the fields today and, and just randomly drop a compass needle and take a, a, a bearing on a line except in extremely remote circumstances. Everything today, or, or most everything done today, and especially in the cities and, and suburbs, is, is GPS. It's all tied into a coordinate system on GPS.
Got it. Mr. Hurst?
I guess one more question. And what's the implication? Is there any, is there any implication at all? I mean, the, the numbers that are recorded?
Well, I mean, maybe Dan can speak to this, but I think the implication is the city needs the one that's in front of us. That's what they require, those bearing systems, but.
Yeah, every, every plan that's recorded should have the datum that's, it's referencing as part of the notation in the plan. So it really doesn't matter what datum you're using, as long as you're referencing the datum. You can establish that same system in another datum if you wanted to. But I can, I can affirm what, what the gentleman's saying about the datum that they are using is the current preferred datum for all survey work and GIS work in the city.
Yeah, and just to, maybe to the point you were getting at, I mean- Yeah, and just to, maybe to the point you were getting at, I mean, this plan would be recorded, so it would be a matter of record in the, you know, in the chain of title, right? So if somebody were to go look and see, you know, even though it doesn't affect the lot size, yes, the bearings are different, but somebody would see the newly-reported plan, right, so.
So there'd be no real impact?
Yeah.
Alderman, Kathy?
Are you then saying that if, or is the contention that if the bearing systems are different, you're looking at two different systems, that if the butter system was correct, then the applicant would not have the square footage they need to build, or is it just a matter of recording the actual data for the property for record? Is it more of a procedural thing, or is it more of a, this was going to affect what's being built or not?
I mean, I try not to speak for the people, but it's, I understood the butter to be saying, the bearings that are referenced in the deed are different than the bearings that are referenced in the plan. What we just heard from surveyors that the use of different bearings in Wisconsin, if you're rotating the plan fourteen and a half degrees from, you know, magnetic north to true north, it doesn't change the dimensions-
Okay.
-of the lot or the area. So I was just saying, I think, in terms of, if somebody were to go look at the original deed, and then look at, you know, this plan, they would see the different bearings, but you know, that's, in terms of the chain of title, you would have those superseding documents, right, so you'd say, okay, you know, that deed is effectively modified by things that are recorded after.
Okay.
Mr. Peterson?
A question for the surveyor. As a matter of curiosity, does the magnetic north drift over time? So a hundred years from now, a thousand years from now, it'll be in a different location?
Yes, it changes constantly. I believe it changes anywhere between, about here, or anywhere between about fourteen to sixteen degrees to the west. It's, if we want to get back on it to reestablish it, there is actually a website where you can go in and key in a specific year and location, and it'll tell you what the magnetic declination was at that point in time. Follow-up?
Sure.
So does that mean the true north does not drift over time?
Well, true north, yeah, correct, true north does not.
Thank you.
Are there questions by the board for the applicant or staff? Mr. Ballinger?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Perhaps staff could just remind the board, what would be the most current round of comments from engineering staff? The date of those comments, please?
The date of the comments are March eighth.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant by the board? Okay. All right, hearing no other questions by the board, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, move into the meeting. Okay, so we've got the application in front of us, two lot subdivision, I think we've talked through the deed piece, I mean, I have a pretty good comfort and understanding of it, I understand the confusion, and certainly, you know, but I feel like the current survey is being presented as it should be, I mean, I'm not sure there's a value in creating another survey that just is on a different bearing plane that is the same geometry. And I fully understand, you know, I mean, the ground is the ground here, the roads are the roads, they're not, those are not moving, so, so we have a pretty solid understanding relationally where the property is. I'm comfortable with the stormwater as being approved. I do think maybe for record, and I don't know if this is staff or Dan, you can pass along, maybe there is some maintenance requirement on the storm drain that's at that corner. I mean, that's not a planning board thing, that's a public works kind of thing, but, you know, it appears from the butter, there might be an issue there, so we should, we should pass along that that should be looked at as a city maintenance item, I think. And so those are really, I'm comfortable with the overhead utility having, you know, the understanding of what's going on with it now, myself, but I'd welcome any comments from the board or discussion items. Alderman, Kathy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is more maybe curiosity, but is this a common occurrence in planning and developing with the bearing systems? The reason I ask that question is, if it is common, then obviously there's precedence in that creates little friction for approving the applicant's application, but if it's something new, then obviously that's something we'd want to discuss, so I just wanted to clarify that.
We certainly have had old plans with different bearing systems, that's not uncommon, frankly, at all. It would be uncommon, I think, if we had a new plan referenced in an older bearing system. I can't remember one of those in my decade here, so, yeah, the current GPS-type bearing system is pretty ubiquitous as far as I can remember in any plan submitted, or that I've reviewed, but, you know, I'm an engineer as well, so I do look at that stuff, so.
Yeah, I'll say, it's not something I've thought about before this particular plan. I think, I suspect that, you know, because Scott said, there are plenty of cases where we're looking at, you know, properties where the deeds are older and would have used a different bearing system, I just don't think it comes up, it's just not raised, right? So I don't recall it ever coming up as an issue that's been discussed previously. So, a follow-up?
Sure.
Thank you. So in your opinion, we would not need or require any more surveying or legal opinions to be comfortable moving forward, based on the bearing system issue?
Yeah, in my opinion, we're generally relying on staff and city engineering review of that, because they are experts in that, and they're certainly looking at the survey. And I'm comfortable with that generally, myself, but it's certainly up to anybody here to have their own, their own concerted question with that, so, yeah. Mr. Peterson?
Just a question for the chair.
Yep.
Are we taking more questions from the public?
No, we're definitely. Mr. Meehan?
Chair, I was just, I drove by and looked at the lot itself, and it's a neighborhood that's very condensed, you know, there's apartments across the street. I wondered just what you thought, you know, as precedent of shaving off the corner of a deck, extending a property line back behind another property to get the square footage needed, to fit a duplex in a space that is minimal. Are there, I understand he meant the minimal square footage.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the only standard we have? Do we look at that and say, you know, it's, I mean, you're cutting off a deck, and you're kind of wedging this in there just to get the square footage, where it doesn't necessarily practically exist?
Yeah, I mean, my two cents is, I have seen that pretty significantly, you know, it's, it doesn't, it's not, so it's not out of the norm of what we've seen.
Okay.
And, you know, I'd also add that, you know, our master plan is looking for more housing, right? I mean, it's very evident in the city's master plan that we're looking to build more housing, so taking advantage, at least smartly and reasonably of a lot, to increase the housing capacity of the lot, is, in my opinion, only, and everybody can have their own opinion, not inconsistent with our master plan that we have right now.
Thank you.
So as long as the character of the neighborhood is also consistent with multi-unit kind of, you know, arrangements, that's just my read, that maybe everybody can have their own, but-
Yeah, I mean, I agree, I mean, we discussed, we've seen a lot of, you know, two lots of divisions over the last few years, and, you know, I think that's reflective of the fact that there's just not a lot of land to develop, and at the same time, we do have a housing need. So that's why I do think you see a lot of these infill lots, right, where people are taking advantage of smaller lots that are, you know, just meet the square footage requirements, but do meet them. And, you know, to your point about your observation, I mean, there are other, you know, duplexes in this neighborhood, there are other apartment housing, this is not, so it's not as if this is, somebody's throwing a duplex with all single-family houses around. And so I tend to agree, I mean, you know, if somebody meets the requirements of the ordinance, there better be a pretty good reason if we're saying, no, this isn't appropriate for this lot.
Thank you.
Other comments by the board? Anybody? Alderman, Kathy?
I wanted to give the people other time, but-
No, yeah, I bet it, yeah.
One of the other butters, I don't want to butcher his name.
Mr. Ronald. I spoke to him by email very briefly, because he did send this letter to the Board of Alderman, and being an Alderman, I do represent the citizens, and he'd asked me to just remind the board of the letter, of their concerns, and I particularly wanted to call the sidewalk contribution, because that's something I was not familiar with, and so I had to, you know, call the city and ask about that, and I don't want to step outside my wheelhouse, but I think it would be appropriate or nice that gentlemen who know more than I do could explain how the sidewalk contribution works, so if the butter does watch the video later or read the minutes, he'll have a better understanding of what's going on there.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I can summarize it quickly, essentially, the, you know, when there aren't a lot of sidewalks in a certain area, there's an opportunity for the, and there's specific criteria, it's not about a lot, it's certain distances and stuff that the applicant referenced, there's an opportunity for them to ask to essentially put money in what the city has as sidewalk fund, in lieu of constructing sort of a piece of sidewalk in the middle of a bunch, an area where there are no connecting sidewalks, and with the intent, you know, my understanding of the intent of that, to be, to be able to aggregate those funds, and they are corridor-specific planning can kind of-
Quadrant, yes.
Yeah, so they're quadrant-specific, so that fund is for generally in the area of the site, and for the city to prioritize where the sidewalk extensions take place, instead of just building pieces of them all over the place, they can extend them more smartly, if you will. And that's how I add it, yeah, that's-
Appreciate it.
How we read it. Yeah, the only thing I'd add to that, I was smiling, because we spent a lot of time over the years talking about sidewalks and this waiver in particular, and I don't know if it was about, was it two years ago or so, the planning board, you know, we recognized that, you know, a complaint that some people had was, you know, they weren't entirely sure what, you know, what the standards were in terms of the waiver, and so in addition to the specific criteria in the ordinance, you know, the planning boards had been, were going to sort of establish layer-on, some guidance on top of it, so people understand what the planning board's going to expect. And so you'll see here that there's a reference to, you know, fifty dollars per square foot, per linear square foot, which has been the standard forever, and then deducting the section of the lot for the driveway, and that's because, you know, we established that that's the expectation, is that we would ask for the full frontage, but less the driveway length as part of that frontage. So, so there's been, there has been a lot of discussion about this waiver over the years, and we've tried really hard to apply the standards consistently, and furtherance of, I think, what, you know, Scott accurately described as the goals.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other comments? Okay. So anybody want to make a motion regarding this stuff? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve new business, project A twenty-two dash zero-zero-one-two, property located at one-eighty-one to one-eighty-three Flagstone Drive, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO, section one-ninety dash one-thirty-eight-G, subject to the following eight conditions. First, with respect to a waiver request regarding physical features, shall read is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number two, a waiver request with respect to underground utilities, shall read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number three, with request to sidewalk construction, shall read is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Further, the dollar amount shall total nine thousand nine hundred eighty dollars and fifty cents. Stipulation four, as written in the staff report. Stipulation five shall be amended to read March, engineering comment stated March eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Stipulations six through eight as written in the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ballinger, so we have that motion to approve A twenty-two dash zero-zero-one-two, with the eight stipulations as stated by Mr. Ballinger, do we have a second on that? Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any abstentions? None. That motion passes, thank you. All right, next up on the agenda, we have new business subdivision, this is case number A twenty-two dash zero-zero-zero-two, G Mac Properties LLC owner, this is an application and acceptance of proposed twenty-nine unit multifamily townhouse subdivision with associated condominium documents. This property is located at four, six, and eight Domain Avenue, and I'm going to go ahead, assuming if we do take jurisdiction in here, this case, along with new business site plan, A twenty-two dash zero-zero-zero-three, same owner, owner, same application, same location, so. First up, I'd ask from the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at A twenty-two dash zero-zero-zero-two? And this is the subdivision plan, and want to make a motion as to whether it's complete and ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over new business subdivision plan, case A twenty-two dash zero-zero-zero-two.
Okay, so we have that motion to take jurisdiction of A twenty-two dash zero-zero-zero-two. Do we have a second on it? Second by Mr. Meehan. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? That motion passes. And now with regard to A twenty-two dash zero-zero-zero-three, same applicant, same owner, this is the site plan, does anybody have a chance to take a look and want to make a motion as to whether this is ready for jurisdiction?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over new business site plan, case A twenty-two dash zero-zero-zero-three.
All right, so we have a motion to take jurisdiction of A twenty-two dash zero-zero-three by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second on? Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? None? No abstentions, that passes. Okay, so, yeah, you can go ahead and present both the subdivision plan and the site plan together, and we'll take questions on them, sort of as a group.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Chris Geida, and I'm a soils and wetland scientist with Fieldstone Land Consultants, working with G Mac Properties on this condominium, phase-two condominium of Divine Peace. I'm kind of standing in for Chad Brandon, who's a project engineer who wasn't able to be here tonight. As far as the subdivision goes, this is a, I believe it's four, six, and eight domain, and so the first phase is to merge these lots. There were existing homes that are being demolished, or have been demolished, on three separate lots. We're requesting those lots be merged prior to development with the condominium. That's pretty much it.
All right. There's no, any waivers on the subdivision?
No.
None, none left, right? Yeah.
Oh, yes, sir.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, there was one left. Yeah, there's a- Yeah, there's a physical features on site within a thousand feet be shown? Can you just talk about that?
Right, so, again, as in the previous subdivision, we request a waiver to that thousand feet. While the physical features, again, it's a daunting task and financial cost to provide all that. That really wouldn't serve any significant purpose to the city or, or the applicant. So we request that waiver.
Okay, thanks. All right, regarding the site plan?
So this, these, these three properties do straddle one of the zoning lines. They're basically, the majority of this is in the, um, excuse me, I got to get them right here. I believe it's a general business, the general business. So, um, those, those basically features in the general business, I believe, will transfer over to the smaller parcel, they're allowed to be merged and, and use those setbacks and that criteria in that zone. This is a twenty-nine unit proposed condominium. It'll look familiar because it's almost identical to the one just to the northwest here, across the street from Domain. We don't have any issues with any of the staff comments, engineering or fire department items. There, in the, in the staff comments, there were some minor requests as far as the stormwater. There's a, a chamber system proposed in the center of the site. Provide infiltration, the soils on these sites is a, it's a sandy, excessively drained soils, so it has good infiltration. There were some minor comments as far as surcharge on extreme storm events. The design meets all of the city's engineering requirements. There was a provision for an overflow that went into this, it's a small infiltration trench along this side. I believe the engineering requested that that be rerouted so that it basically discharged off towards Domain Avenue, and we don't have any issues with, with doing that either. There was a, I believe one of the recent documents was the decks, we proposed to remove those. Some of the proposals showed decks that were above four feet, you know, so it wouldn't be allowed. We don't propose to have any of those, so those decks have been removed on those units that were three stories. And I think that's, I think that's pretty much it. Again, I can go through the staff comments. I think we also provided a suitability report that I think you have in your packet as well. If anybody had any issues with that, happy to attempt to answer any questions on that.
So there's one waiver still on this one, right, Scott? This is just, uh.
Yeah.
Existing conditions. So again, same.
Right.
Same, same as the subdivision?
Yes, same waiver.
Okay. Can you just explain, so the, the removal of the decks, so it, so some of the, some of the units, the deck can be at a lower level, but these, these ones to the, on the left side of the plan, they, they would practically have to be too far off the ground?
Right.
Got it?
It's this, you can see in this, in this area here where these, these, uh, two-bedroom units are higher, they're narrower, but higher, so the decks would have been on a second story. That's obviously not, not permitted.
Got it.
So we're removing those from the, from the proposal.
Yep.
Clarification.
Scott, yep?
Anything over four feet that's in the setback isn't allowed without getting zoning relief.
Got it.
In this case, decks that are left are four feet. It also gives the option, it's like down the road, uh, putting up, uh, before put deck there, they can be within the lines.
But they would need a zoning relief on that?
If, if they put it over four feet.
If they put it over four.
Yeah, otherwise.
Right, okay. But practically speaking, that's the garage on the lower level, so the deck wouldn't be that desirable at the moment. Okay, I got it.
Right.
Questions by the board for the applicant? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick point of clarification with regard to some of the staff stipulations. You're, you're aware that there is a recommendation for a contribution to the Ambrose Street Quarter Fund? I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, thank you, yes. Yes, we have no issues with that contribution, and happy to make it. I believe it was in the amount of fifty-eight hundred dollars.
Do you have the updated amount, Scott? Do you know what that was?
I think it's forty-six.
Yeah, we have forty-six in our report.
Sure, we'll take forty-six.
We can verify that. Oh, wait.
Oh.
It should be right in the correspondence.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Hudson.
In the, uh, it's correct in the recommended stipulations. The calculation in the text is, is, there's an error because it's, it references a calculation by a number of units, which isn't the case. It's by number of peak hour trips.
Okay.
And so the trip, the trip estimate is twenty-three trips, a two-hundred-dollar trip is the forty-six-hundred dollars. So that's the correct amount.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that's what's in the stipulation?
Yeah, so Wayne's letter.
Okay, got it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yep, Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one, one other quick question for, for staff. And I apologize, just with the plethora of materials, the last couple of meetings, is, what is the current date of the review letter from the engineering department?
Yeah, that's, uh, it would be March eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Harper?
I was just curious, what is the, the square footage of the land in the general business zone versus the park industrial? I apologize, I can't, it's so tiny, I can't read it.
It's still tiny even on this one. Required park industrial is thirty thousand square feet.
Sorry, can you just grab the microphone, just because otherwise they won't pick it up? It's required thirty thousand square feet, the existing, oh, you're going to give me all the lots here? Looking for the total. Well, so, so in the general business district, was that the, the, um, H seventy-six is sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty-four square feet, and H eighty is seventeen thousand sixty-nine square feet. So whatever those are together. H one oh nine?
It's about thirty-four thousand.
Thirty-three oh two six.
Yeah, yeah. So they're pretty close. It looks like a thousand feet or more maybe in the.
That's why I was wondering.
In the general business versus the park industrial.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hence, hence they don't need a CUP as a result of seventeen thousand.
Yeah. Okay. Other questions by the board for the applicant? Okay. Not hearing any. At this point, I would open this to the general public. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition, concerned, or have a question of the plan? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody here in the audience. How about on Zoom? Anybody wishing to speak in opposition, concerned, or have a question of the plan?
I don't see anybody with their hand raised.
Nobody? Okay. All right. At this point, I'll give the board one last opportunity to ask any questions of the applicant or staff during the hearing. Okay, seeing none? I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing and move into the meeting. So, all right, so we have a subdivision and a site plan. Logistically speaking, we, we need to take the subdivision first because the site plan won't work unless the subdivision gets through. You know, my comments on this, pretty straightforward. We've seen this develop for several occasions in this area. My personal opinion, they've been successful, and the results of developments have been a positive impact. Certainly, in my opinion, in alignment with our master plan. Particularly that corridor even, which was directly referenced in the, in our latest master plan, as having, wanting to get more residential combined, you know, sort of a mixed-use corridor, so. So I think this is pretty consistent in my book, but happy to discuss. Or anybody else have any comments or questions or in the meeting here? Okay. Anybody want to make a motion though? Uh, Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would make a motion to approve new business A twenty-two dash zero 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 two condominium subdivision. And that would be with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO, Section one ninety dash one forty-six D. And there are a total of three stipulations. The first stipulation is a waiver request, requesting a waiver from Section one ninety dash two eighty-two B nine, requiring showing of physical features within a thousand feet. Now will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And stipulations number two and three to read is written in the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Varley. We have this motion from, to approve A twenty-two dash zero zero two with the three stipulations as stated. Do we have a second?
Second?
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? No abstentions? That motion passes. Okay. Regarding the site plan? Yep, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I have one question.
Yep.
Can we confirm that date of engineering comments? I thought I heard a, a date.
The eighteen?
Yeah, I don't, I think the February twenty-fifth date is correct, but correct me if I'm wrong, I don't see a copy of a newer memo. I think it's correct as written in the staff report, but staff can clarify.
That's fine, yeah.
Oh, yes, you, you are correct, I'm sorry. The, uh, that's the Granite Street updated comments.
So the twenty-fifth is the rate?
Twenty-fifth, yes, correct, in the staff report.
There wasn't a recent mill since then, so there was nothing to respond to, so.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Varley?
Uh, so I would make a motion to approve new business A twenty-two dash zero 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 three, site planned. And that would be with the finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO, Section one ninety dash one forty-six D, with a total of eleven stipulations. And that includes one waiver request in stipulation one from Section one ninety dash two seventy-nine EE for an existing conditions plan, and that will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And then stipulations two through eleven as written in the staff report.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Varley to approve A twenty-two dash zero 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 three site plan with the stipulations, I believe there was eleven, as stated. Do we have a second on that?
Second, Mr. Chair?
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. All right, thank you very much. Okay. Next up on the agenda, we're back to new business subdivision plans. This is case number A twenty-two dash zero zero two zero. This is Max Properties LLC. It's an application and acceptance of a proposed two-lot subdivision. This property is located at eighteen Granite Street. So at this point, I'd ask for the board, has anybody had a chance to take a look at this application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion to accept jurisdiction over new business subdivision plan, Case A twenty-two dash zero zero two zero, Max Properties, located at eighteen Granite Street.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to accept jurisdiction of A twenty-two dash zero zero two zero. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes, we have jurisdiction. Okay, it's all yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Heiner Swanson, Three Congress Street here in Nashua. Here tonight representing Property Possible, Inc., a property located at sixteen eighteen Granite Street. Also, also with me here tonight is Michael LaFavor, who's the applicant. I believe he's on Zoom, as well as attorney Jeff Saul, the project attorney, with us here tonight. We're seeking subdivision approval for a one into two subdivision located at sixteen eighteen Granite Street. I'd just like to provide a brief presentation, and then our team would be happy to answer any questions from either the board or, or the public. As shown on the, on the screen, property is sixteen eighteen Granite Street, map forty-four, lot one thirty-four. It's approximately a third of an acre, located in the RC zone. We're abutted by Granite Street to the east, and then really a combination of single-family duplex and multifamily developments on all sides. It's a really old lot. The reference plan we have is from eighteen thirty-two. We worked hard to, to determine the, the property boundary on this one. I won't get into the, the survey nerdiness that we got onto in the last case, which I appreciate was needed there.
The, the original one wasn't GPS though, probably.
I'm an engineer, not a surveyor. I will say that Scott McPhee did have the plan that we, took us a couple of weeks to find at the registry, so he was well aware of this as we got going. Uh, the site contains about a hundred sixty feet of frontage on Granite Street. The lot currently contains a, a three-unit dwelling in the northerly portion of the property, up, up along Granite Street, as well as three detached garages, you know, towards the rear of the property. Current street address is being sixteen A, sixteen B, and then eighteen Granite Street, as we understand it. There are two existing curb cuts, so the northerly curb cut is about twelve feet wide. The southerly curb cut, as it exists today, is, is fairly wide there, is about forty feet, if you've been out there. Large portions of the existing lot are paved. So in total, between the buildings and parking, the lot contains about twenty-four percent open space. There are some lawn areas located in front of the building along Granite Street, as well as some of the slivers of the perimeter of the property. This section of Granite Street is one-way in the southerly direction, with on-street parking located along the westerly side of the street in certain locations. Existing grades, Linda, do you mind going to the second plan, please?
This second sheet?
Yeah, this, this one, thank you, sorry. Uh, this is the topographic subdivision. I was just going to speak to the grades on Granite Street. So it's fairly flat in the northerly end, about two percent, and then gradually steepens as you move across the property. It's about eight percent towards the, the southerly corner of the property. The main body of the site, given that it's paved, is relatively flat and moderate topography. There are various retaining walls located on either side of, of the building, along with the site perimeter, which is not uncommon in, in densely populated urban areas like this. Soils of the site are generally classified as a well-drained, canton urban complex soil. And of course, there's no wetlands present on site. Lastly, the existing building is currently serviced by public sewer, water by Penachuk, gas, and overhead electric and telecommunications. In terms of the proposed development, as shown on the subdivision plan, we're proposing a one into two subdivision, existing lot one thirty-two into two new lots, new lot one thirty-four and new lot one seventy-two. New lot one thirty-four will measure about point two four acres and contain the existing three-unit building. New lot one thirty-four will measure about point two four acres and contain the existing three-unit building. New lot one seventy-two, which will be known as fourteen Granite Street, measures about point one one five acres. And will contain the proposed single-family dwelling. That's on the southerly portion of the property. Of course, both lots conform with the minimum dimensional requirements in the RC zone. Site improvements, Linda, do you mind going to the next page? It's proposed to demolish the existing detached garages located in the rear of the property. Uh, the existing driveway and pavement areas would then be modified specifically in the southerly portion of the site to provide a twelve-foot wide driveway between the existing and proposed buildings. Uh, this would allow us to construct five new parking spaces in the rear of the three-unit building. The idea is five is directly in between the one and a half to one point nine percent that you would require for a multifamily unit. A new easement will be provided to the benefit of new lot one thirty-four. As you can see, a portion of that parking area as well as that driveway does straddle that new property line. So an easement would be granted from lot one seventy-two to the benefit of one thirty-four. A new thing, a single-family dwelling will be constructed upon new lot one seventy-two. The current design shows a one-car garage and new driveway directly off of Granite Street along with new sidewalk improvements. As well as new utility service connections and associated site improvements. In the interest of full disclosure, the applicant does have an agreement with Habitat for Humanity to purchase new lot one seventy-two and to construct the new single-family dwelling. As you know, the purpose of this lot grading plan and utility plan is to show the intended location of the single-family home and really demonstrate or prove out that the proposed lot can support such a use, given the setbacks, topography, and availability of utilities. Uh, the developer certainly reserves the right to make changes to the exact lot size, type, location, elevation, garage configuration, utility location. As needed, typically these details are finalized at the time of foundation permit. Uh, with regards to stormwater, the stormwater design for single-family road frontage lots is often extremely challenging. Especially in urban parts of the city due to the smaller size of the lot, shorter driveways, limited room for proposed stormwater practices. Uh, in this case, due to the amount of impervious area that currently exists on the lot, we really have an opportunity to improve the drainage condition. Um, and that's going to be done both by reducing the overall impervious area on-site as well as providing a couple of select locations where we can introduce stormwater recharge where none currently exists. Being a redeveloped site, we are required to meet the minimum stormwater regulations to the maximum extent possible as required by the planning board with the goal of reducing impervious area by twenty percent, which we are doing. And also meeting the minimum open space requirement in that zoning district. It is our professional opinion that the project conforms with this criteria, given my testimony again about the net decrease of impervious area as well as the reduction of post-development peak flows leaving the site in all storm events. I do want to briefly talk about parking. There was some testimony, as noted in the staff report, the applicant did apply for a variance to construct a duplex unit on this lot. Uh, where we were short by density, that variance request was denied. Uh, there was some testimony on, at that meeting by certain neighbors that felt that a single-family dwelling was more appropriate here. Specifically, some folks who live off of Orange Street who abut us to the rear. And there was also some testimony related to neighborhood parking. It's a dense urban area, tight streets. You know, parking was a concern from those neighbors who spoke at the hearing. I'd note in, in looking at GIS maps and driving the site multiple times and based on the testimony of these abutters. Many of the adjacent properties don't necessarily contain sufficient parking on their own sites and rely on on-street parking to satisfy their needs. Complicating the matter, there's a funeral home at the, at the foot of Granite Street, which I'm sure at certain times tends to eat up some of the on-street parking as well. It's our understanding that the previous property owner of the subject site did rent parking spaces at certain times. Either surface parking or garage parking to abutting owners or tenants of those properties. That's not intended to be the case going forward. Uh, there were no easements that were, or anybody else is aware of. It was kind of an informal agreement and our intent is the parking is to be used for, for tenants of this, of this site. So, Mr. Chair, we did have two waiver requests as part of this application package. Waiver request letter dated February tenth, twenty twenty-two, and last revised March eighth. Uh, the first waiver is related to existing conditions survey being performed with a thousand feet of the site. Um, the second waiver is to allow overhead and electric telecommunications services. Uh, the justification for these requests is described in detail in the letters, which I asked to be incorporated into the record by reference. I'm more than happy to speak to either of those waiver requests if there are further questions from the board. Uh, so in summary, Mr. Chair, we believe this application is complete and conforms with the subdivision plan requirements. We feel like this property is being redeveloped in a responsible manner and will provide additional housing at a time that is very much needed in the city. Um, the conditions outlined in the staff report are acceptable to the applicant. I would just lastly note that regarding condition six, we did receive engineering department review comments on March eighteenth. Uh, I did have the opportunity to review those comments with Mr. Mandola and Mr. Hudson this week. And I believe it's safe to say that we're in agreement that we feel that we can address those comments as a condition of approval going forward. Uh, thank you.
Okay, um, so just quick, the, um, the drawing of the new line, sort of straight, if you will, versus turning it to, you know, you went for easements instead of trying to manipulate the, the boundaries, I guess, right? Just because you felt like that was a better solution here. Just because, is that because of that driveway would have, there was no way to get around that? Does that make?
Yeah, tight, tight urban site here, so we've got setbacks to consider both from the existing building, the proposed building. Uh, if you look at the area, the minimum lot area for the new lot one seventy-two, as well as density requirements for the existing three-unit. Uh, you know, we're, we're tight in both locations, so there wasn't a ton of wiggle room there to, to set that line.
Okay, thanks. Other questions by the board? Ms. Arber?
I'm sorry, just, just to confirm, there, there will be no parking for this new home? Is that what you were getting at?
So there will be parking.
Okay.
They'll have one, one new driveway space.
Okay.
New driveway off of Granite Street, so one, one space there. And one garage space. So it would have technically two spaces for that single family. And then the five surface spaces that you see would be for the three-unit building.
Okay, thank you.
I, I just also note that we were trying to group the parking spaces together. You can see in the, uh, Linda, if you could just pan out for a second, there's a little where we're taking down a detached garage in that upper-left corner. There would be some room there, so I could do three spaces in one and two in the other. But we were trying to find a little more contiguous green space there. I know there's not a lot out there, but that was kind of the thought there, so. We could certainly, if the five spaces in that location slightly encroaching the property line is an issue with the board. We could certainly comply with providing additional spaces up there, but we liked having a little bit of green space in that location.
Uh, are there questions by the board for the applicant, our staff, or in the hearing? Alderman Catherine?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the, the existing three-unit dwelling will stay as-is?
Correct.
How has the response been from the people that live in that particular building to the new building being built next to them?
I don't know that. I haven't spoken with them. I don't believe that they came to the zoning hearing to speak one way or another, so I'm not really aware of
Okay.
how they feel one way or another.
Alright, thank you.
Other questions by the board? At this point, then, I will go ahead and open it up to the audience. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition, concern? Or even in favor of the plan? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and open it up on Zoom. Is there anybody on Zoom wishing to speak in opposition, concern, or have a question of the plan?
I believe there is.
Okay.
Okay, you need to unmute yourself? There you go.
Yep, uh, we can see your hand. Go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Uh, my name is Deb Chisholm. My address is seventeen Jamaica Lane. I am speaking in support of the subdivision. I am the president of the Board of Directors for Greater Nashua Habitat for Humanity. Uh, and Tom's correct, we currently have an agreement with the current owner that once the subdivision is approved, that we will start in earnest with building a, an owner-occupied, single-family residence there. Something that, as he also stated, is badly needed within the city. What would end up happening is Habitat would find a partner family and that partner family would put in their sweat equity, as is common with all of our Habitat build sites, and we would be putting in a single-family home, hopefully for someone to be living in, and probably early twenty twenty-four is what we're looking at right now.
Okay, alright. Thank you very much for your comments. Anybody else wishing to speak, opposing, concerned, or in favor? Go ahead.
Yes, I would like to.
Uh, okay.
My name is Frank Iavino. I live at thirty-seven Orange Street. And, and Deb, this, it's pretty tough because I love Habitat for Humanity and I think it's a great place and you do great work. Uh, I just think Granite Street is so dense. It's an extremely dense place. To now have a three-family that only has five parking spots is going to be very difficult. On Orange Street, I look across the street at houses that are there and people can't even get in and out of their places because there is no parking. Uh, and it's very difficult for them. And Granite Street is the same place. And when you put that much density in that small of an area, we are not helping the neighborhood. And so I would just ask the board to, to think about that density issue and to find another place for Habitat for Humanity to have another great house for people that really need to have a house to live in. But in a place that is not so dense, in a place that's following the expectations of plans that have been put together by the city so that we all have a great place to live. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Um, we have somebody from the audience that wishes to speak about the plan. Go ahead.
Sorry, hello, hello Chairman and the rest of the committee. I'm the Ward Three Alderman. I am the Alderman of that, of that location and so on. And I kind of sat back there and listening and while I think we need this, we need as much housing as possible. Much what has just was spoken about the parking, it, it is an issue and it's, it's an issue throughout that entire area, throughout the entire French Hill area. We've got the one point five parking space. They meet that criteria. So it will be hard for you to, to, to say no. But Granite Street, the one thing about Granite Street is the people there don't qualify for overnight parking, yet there's overnight parking on Granite Street. But it's for other, other people. So that makes it very difficult for these people to park in general. My fear is that very rarely do we have one bedroom or, or even one apartment that one point five. You have at least two parking spaces, three parking spaces. And while I appreciate as much green space as possible, I honestly, I think I'd rather see parking spaces put there. They're meeting all the criteria. I have nothing against Habitat for Humanity. I have nothing against them, them trying to subdivide the property and do everything like that. I would like more homes, but parking is such an issue in that area. The one complaint I get as an Alderman, and, and I'm sure Alderman Kathy probably gets the same thing, parking, parking, parking. Getting tickets at night, having no place to park. I recently had a, a very lovely person who approached me and said, I need handicap parking on Granite Street. Took a walk, looked, there's no true curb cuts that would work for her. Um, and I couldn't even possibly get a dedicated handicapped parking pace for her because if you go down there, it's very narrow. One of the things I think the parking study is going to tell us is to get rid of the on-street parking because fire has a very difficult time trying to get through there. So parking is an issue. As much parking as they can get on their property, I don't really believe that for three, for, for a three-story, that three families, that five parking space is going to be enough. But again, that's your decision. Um, I think they've met all the criteria. I want to see Habitat for Humanity get property, but they're only going to have three parking spaces for two, technically two homes, whether they're on top of each other or they're side by side. It concerns me. And parking in this city is, especially in the French Hill and in that area, is a true nightmare. And I get calls all day and night. I get people crying because their cars have been towed because they got three parking tickets and they have no other place to park. And I, the fact that they're losing these, these parking spaces, that's just kind of the luck of the draw. This is their private property and they have the right to do whatever they want to it. And there's no easement or anything like that. But just think about it. All of those people now have displaced parking. We're going to put in some more homes that are also going to need parking. They're going to need more than five parking for three places, so I just wanted to say that and thank you for listening to me.
Just a quick question for you. So is your concern more with that they're taking away parking?
No.
That somebody else owned, or are you?
No, I, you know.
Or the volume of the parking for the new?
It's going to be the added volume of the parking. The fact that the parking is being taken, taken away, that, this is private property. I can't ask these people to continue doing what they're doing. They have the right to build. They have the right to do all these things. The neighbors to this point have, have been doing the parking, but now they do have to find new parking. And if for any reason, these homes need more than the parking that we give them because that's based on the rules that we have, we're just adding to that nightmare. Um, I, I would never say to them, you have to continue doing what's been done. It's private property. It's, it's theirs to do what they will. And, you know, and I, and I can't force anybody to do that. I just like the board, from this point, from going forward, always think of those parking spaces. And if you look at Granite Street, it's narrow. I appreciate the fact that they're going to be doing some fix of the sidewalks because those are nightmares too. But it's, it's, it's a hard-hit area in that, and there's a lot of multi-flaming homes. If you drive through there, you'll see that some people have driveways and I believe that they've kind of almost paved over their backyards because that's where they're trying to park and so on. So there is no real green space in that area because of parking. Back when these homes were built, you know, I grew up with one car in my family. A family of four, you know. Nowadays, everybody in the family has a car and we need a place to put that car, so.
Okay, alright, thanks. Anybody else in the audience who are on Zoom wishing to speak in opposition, concern, or have a question of the plan? Could be in favor of the plan? Okay. Hearing none, I will go ahead and give the applicant. Yeah, it, it seems like maybe just parking is the one thing to talk about.
Sure. So again, for the record, Tom Zajak with Hayner Swanson. Certainly we're sensitive to the fact that this is an infill development. You folks see that all the time when you, anytime you're adjusting lot lines or building within an existing neighborhood. It's always difficult and so you try to put forth a design that, that balances the regulation versus, you know, neighborhood concerns. And we've tried to do that here. With regards to parking, as I mentioned, we've got one driveway space, one garage space for the single-family dwelling. Given the size and location and even steepness of Granite Street, I don't know if I would really recommend trying to provide more for that single-family. It's got two spaces. The existing three-family lot, so, um, we're providing five spaces, which is directly in between your minimum and maximum. We didn't want to come in asking for waivers. I would maybe suggest to the board, I just talked about the area where I thought I could add two more parking spaces but would eat up more green space. Lot one thirty-four is, uh, Lot 134 is not, the new lot will be just shy of the required open space required by that zone, but we are vastly increasing open space compared to what was out there. The existing lot is not even close to being conforming with the 35% requirement. So I would throw out there, if it's the will of the board and you would like us to construct two more parking spaces on site, we could do that. It's likely that that would require a waiver request, possibly for maximum parking for that lot, as well as possibly for stormwater management regarding how you read the regulation. We're required to reduce by 20% open space. We're at 21 now. So it's such a small site, just adding those two spaces would kind of kick us over. We'd still be reducing peak flows leaving the site. So I would, while we fall short of that specific criteria, I would still argue that we're vastly improving drainage. So I guess I would leave that open for the board to decide. We're certainly comfortable moving forward with the plan that was presented, but would, I guess, offer that as a caveat. The last thing I just wanted to mention was regarding Granite Street itself. As I mentioned, what exists out there is a very wide curb cut. And what we're doing is really being more efficient with the curb cut, making them more concise. So you would potentially have room to go out and stripe a couple more on-street parking spaces out there. That's not something that would be in our jurisdiction to do, but I would just offer that there's a lot more room along that curb line to add probably two or even three more spaces. So, thank you.
Questions by the board for the applicant? Go ahead, Mr. Peterson.
I'd like to ask the applicant, point of clarification.
Grab your mic there.
Just so I have the picture correct. There was a three-family home with 12 garages to start. And in the end, we're going to have, the garage will be gone, but that three-family home will have five spaces. And then the new, single-family home will have one garage and one parking space. So we're going from 12 down to seven parking spaces net count. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, I would say that if you've been out there, not all of those garage spaces are currently able to be parked in. I don't know when, but there's a lot of storage. It's kind of a little bit of a mix, so... But the five spaces is exactly between the minimum and maximum required, so...
Alderman Kath?
I guess this kind of tags onto that. I was going to ask if you knew currently how much parking is being utilized by the current tenants of that building?
So my client advised me. I asked him that same question, and he said the five spaces he feels would be sufficient for those tenants.
Other questions by the board for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
So at this point, I'll give the board one more opportunity to ask any questions of staff or applicant while we're in the hearing.
I guess just a...
Mr. Riley?
Yeah, just a process question. I mean, should we, should we discuss amongst ourselves the parking issue before we close the hearing? We can always reopen the hearing, but...
We can reopen it. I guess I'd probably do it in the meeting. I don't have any issue reopening if we need to, so...
Okay, that's fine.
Any other hearing questions? Okay. At this point, I'll close the hearing then and move into the meeting. So, so we've got a subdivision, existing three-unit. Interesting scenario where it's sort of private property and potentially renting out parking to somebody else. And we definitely have a balancing act here between some of the city master plan desires. Open green space is high up on the list in the master plan, you know, as well as, you know, improved parking. So this is, in my opinion, this is a balancing act one. So, you know, we've got five spaces for three units. Our actual ordinance, yeah, doesn't allow six unless you get a waiver, frankly. So we are, you know, the five is exactly the right number for the ordinance. This is the way our land use codes, excuse me, are written. The two spaces for the single-family, in my opinion, that's a pretty reasonable... I mean, that's super common, right? As far as, but I'm interested to see what people think about the parking with the note, too, that there might be potential for more along the front edge. Mr. Hirsch?
Realistically, won't people just be parking on the green space? What's to keep them from parking on the green space? I don't know if they can get access to it from the curb cut. I assume they can.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's...
At the end of the day, are we kidding ourselves? Because I was running a lot in the neighborhood, saying between the...
Yeah.
I saw people parking everywhere. And my guess is that green space will have respect to this green space.
I mean, I think the owner, you know, I don't know if these are rentals or whatever, but I'm sure the owner has the opportunity to increase parking if they want to, you know, which would obviously affect and make the potential of the rental higher, you know? I guess practically speaking, this is a subdivision plan. This is for staff. Construction of additional parking spaces, is that a change to the subdivision plan in this case? Or...
Technically, if you have five approved spaces and then you add a couple more spaces, you'd need a waiver from you guys because you'd be in, you know?
Yeah.
So it's probably better to add them now potentially if it's available or add one extra or something.
Yeah. Is there, is there, can we stipulate a waiver that essentially allows the construction of it if the applicant desires to construct them in the future? Like, let's say they have people in there, and they need six.
Like a preemptive waiver?
Like a preemptive waiver? Is that a thing? Is that allowable in our... I mean, because we're not really approving a site plan here. We're approving a subdivision plan, right? So...
Correct.
Yeah, the stuff on the site, other than the quantities and the things are...
I mean, they'd still have to buy by the open space.
Yeah.
But in reality, if they added on another parking space, yeah, it's not a site plan, so it's not coming back for the board.
Right.
For any changes.
Yeah. I was just wondering whether, like, a preemptive waiver is even functionally allowable by us? I don't know.
I mean, if you want to add a waiver that exceed the maximum parking so that in the future, if they want to add another parking space?
Yeah, and a waiver for maybe green space.
Well, open space, if they go below their open space, then they have to go to zoning and get a variance.
That's zoning. That's not us, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I...
Mr. Ballinger?
I have a certain level of discomfort about redesigning the site layout on the fly when we don't exactly know what it's going to be. And that would include any potential waivers or future waivers. I think in this case, personally, I would feel comfortable taking action on the plan that was proposed. And then if at some point in the future the applicant needs to reassess, I think that's a whole different story. But I would not feel comfortable, again, redesigning the site in this open forum, so...
Sure. Mr. Meehan?
Yeah, I would agree. And I would also note, you know, I run by this property every week. I don't think the idea that there are 12 parking spots there because there's garages is really accurate. They're not used that way. There are storage spaces, and there's all kinds of stuff happening in there. So I don't think the net loss is of 12 parking spots when those garages come down. And I think it's also important to note that curb cut creates street parking as well. And so the net loss might not be anything at all. So it's, I don't think that parking issue is as important as we might be making it.
Mr. Hirsch?
I just feel as a practical matter, people are going to park there. Just, it's hard to control multifamily property like that. And I think you're almost better off getting some level of control over how it's all done on-site rather than just have a willy-nilly type of thing where people pull their cars up and, you know, they park there. I almost feel we'd be better off, if we could table this for a session, ask them to redesign and to include the extra two parking spaces, might be an approach to take.
Mr. Peterson?
I'd like to mention, I believe I heard the applicant say, the 12-car garage, which will be demolished, didn't house 12 automobiles. It was just the structure that would be coming down. So it's not like we're starting with 12 spaces and going down. It was never 12 to begin with.
Alderman Kath?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly appreciate Alderman Klee's comments because parking is probably one of the higher-end issues that we have to deal with. I guess if you're arguing both sides, one would be green space competing with parking space, but also we're running into a private property issue, which I'm not a big regulation-heavy person. So I think if they have private property and they meet all the requirements, they should be able to build what they want. But I also can respect Alderman Klee basically saying she'll take the parking over the green space because of the condensed neighborhood. And so, but if they're going to park on the green space anyway, I mean, that's what I have to do in my, I made my grass into a gravel driveway because I had to deal with parking issues. So I also feel uncomfortable making them come back and go through a waiver process. I don't know if that's really helpful for people who are trying to build in the city. And so I just, those are just the two competing ideas is sort of trying to pick out which one's more important, the green space or the parking, and what we do about that.
Yeah, I'm kind of somewhat on the same page as you, but I'm finding it very difficult to understand how we could potentially disapprove a plan because it meets our requirements.
You could run into the litigation issue, right?
That's essentially the counterargument is the city land use codes that are being applied here are not in the best interests of the city, you know? So when we run into that historically, I'll be honest, that's an Aldermanic issue. It's not a planning board issue. You know, if the 1.5 is a problem, then it's a land use code issue that needs amendment because 1.9 is also the max. So, you know, in order to decline this, you would essentially be saying, you know, we are declining this because it meets the requirements. It's a little bit of a catch-22 here, I get it. But, you know, we're not a policy body. We're an implementation. I mean, there is a policy process for this. The master plan, the land use codes, the updates that go, you know, that come in later. The approvals by the code, by the Aldermanic group.
Yeah, that would really...
You know, by circumventing that process to get something we want is a little problematic in my opinion. I mean, I guess we can ask for staff input. Am I reading that right? I mean, we're...
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. So...
That may be something that we need to look into as we rewrite the land use code.
Yeah. I mean, we are in that process of starting another land use rewrite soon because the master plan is done. But like a preemptive jump over that is, I'm a little concerned about.
Follow-up to this discussion?
Yep, go ahead, Alderman Kath.
Not that I necessarily favor this, but as more of a brainstorm, is there any process by which the applicant, if it's proven out that the parking does become an issue and does present an issue to Granite Street, that they would have to revisit that? Much like when businesses have, you know, queuing, that becomes a problem. We then have to go back to them and address issues and have them address the queuing that they're causing. Does something similar apply to residential areas? Or is it just, it is what it is kind of the thing?
Well, in rentals, and maybe Mr. Riley can comment on this. I mean, when you rent, you are told what the parking capacity of the site is, and you're essentially signing on to that with a lease. But there isn't any way this board can regulate how many cars somebody buys in it.
Yeah.
You know, and there is parking in town, but...
I was talking more for the owner. So if it's a rental and the owner of the building,
Yeah.
he rents out, and that family happens to have kids, and those kids grow up and they buy cars.
I know.
So now you run into a space where they're filling up the curb, and then we have to go back and say, "Hey..."
Yeah, it's tough. I mean, in the downtown district, you know, zero parking, right? For a...
Yeah, I mean, I don't think there's anything of the nature of like a triggering requirement.
Right, yeah.
You know, would say, "Oh, you, you know, you're exceeding the use of the parking spaces that were allocated. You're not going to come back to the planning board." I mean, I'm guessing there are probably some elements of like code enforcement depending on what was happening on the site.
Yeah, improvability, I guess, would be another thing.
Mr. Hudson?
I just want to say I concur with Mr. Ballinger. I think we should basically review the plans in front of us and not try to re-engineer it, so, or redesign it, which means no disrespect to the parking issues that exist in the neighborhood. It's just, we should take up things that are before us. And if it meets all the regulations, I agree. I don't see how we can, you know, vote against that if it meets all the requirements otherwise.
Dan, would you concur that what the engineer said, that the redesign of the curb cuts does allow two or three more striped spots?
I quickly scaled off about 40 feet. Maybe I didn't, I did that with my pen, so I mean...
Yeah, yeah.
So I can foresee a couple spaces, as was described.
So, and that's a feasible, your understanding of that street, and that would be feasible in that location?
Yeah, there'd be additional curb without a curb cut that could accommodate two additional cars, it appears.
Mr. Riley?
Yeah, I would just, I guess, along the same lines as Dan and Bob. I mean, the other thing is, you know, we're talking about the number of spaces that are available on this particular lot. And it seems to me there's one issue, which is, are there enough spaces for that three-family? And that goes back to the policy issue, which is, you know, again, is tricky because, as you said, we're effectively saying they need and, you know, ask anything else, we'd be forcing them to exceed the ordinance. I mean, also, obviously, there's just a major parking issue in the area generally. And even if we were to add two spots to this lot, you know, even if we were to suggest that, it seems to me that doesn't necessarily facilitate or improve the parking situation more broadly, right? I mean, unless...
Unless they're going to offer up spaces to other people who need them. You know, I mean, it doesn't, to me, necessarily improve the broader, you know, parking shortage problem. So I guess I would be similarly inclined to say, "Let's look at the planning boards. It seems to do as best it can, you know, under the circumstances of what we've got, and meets the ordinance in doing so, so..."
Yeah, I guess I'd add, one more thing is, again, going back to the master plan. I mean, the master plan has several key components. One is housing. It's literally at the top of the master plan. Two is open space, green space. It's right near the top of the master plan, you know? You know, and parking is obviously in there, but our master plan does not, you know, in my reading of it, it's not saying create more parking throughout the city for more cars. That's actually not consistent with the master plan. You know, and there is camps of people on both sides of having gone through the whole master plan process. There's a large part of the city that's saying, "We want less cars in the city." And by putting more parking, we're encouraging more cars. So, I mean, I'm not saying that's good or bad, or I subscribe to either one of those. But having gone through the process, that, it does exist, that can't be overlooked. So there's a challenge here of balance, I guess. So, Mr. Meehan?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I would also just note that another part of that master plan, a big concern, was affordable housing.
Yeah.
And just the fact that Habitat for Humanity is going to be doing its project is thrilling to me that, you know, a single-family home in this neighborhood, that's going to be affordable housing for a family that doesn't have that now. It's a big win.
So it's not uncommon for us to have some pros and some cons here on these. And generally, as a board, our job is to weigh the pros and cons and decide whether the pros... And generally, as a board, our job is to weigh the pros and cons and decide whether the pros outweigh the cons or not.
Mr. Peterson?
I think it'd be interesting to know how many vehicles are parked in that driveway overnight, like tonight. Maybe there's only five already. And then when this project is finished, there'll be those five plus two more. We might have a net increase in parking because the garage, the twelve bay garage, didn't house twelve cars. It was a few cars and storage. So in the end, there could be more available parking. We just don't know.
Alderman, Kathy?
Yes, the applicant did say that he was advised by his client that he feels like the parking is sufficient, which says to me that he thinks there's five cars or less parked there currently.
Talking to your mic.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we heard you, yep. All right, any further comments, discussions? Anybody feel like they are in a place where they want to make a motion? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve new business, project A twenty-two dash zero zero two zero, property located at eighteen Granite Street. Finding that it does meet the requirements of site plan NRO one ninety dash one forty-six D, subject to eleven stipulations. Stipulation number one, with respect to a waiver over physical features within one thousand feet shall read is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number two, with respect to a waiver regarding underground utilities shall read is granted and will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulations three through eleven as written in the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ballinger. So we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger to approve this item. With the, the stipulations as stated, do we have a second? Second by Mr. Meehan. Any further discussion by the board? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any abstentions? None. That motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Next case, new business site plan. This is case number eight twenty-two dash zero zero one five, New Meadows Holdings LLC. This is an application and acceptance of a proposed site plan amendment to add one thousand eighty square feet to a structure previously approved at our April eighth, twenty twenty-one planning board meeting. This property is located at four and six Mount Laurel's Drive. So for the board, is anybody a chance to take a look at this application? Want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for jurisdiction? Mr. Meehan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move we accept jurisdiction over new business site plan A twenty-two zero zero one five, New Meadow Holdings.
Okay, so we have that motion to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? No abstentions? Okay, that passes. All right, you're up.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everybody. For the record, my name is Paul Chisholm. I'm a professional engineer with Keats and Orchard Associates. We're the engineers and surveyors of record for the project. Plan before you tonight is an amendment to the previously approved cart barn at the Sky Meadow Country Club. As mentioned already, it's a one thousand eighty square foot addition to the cart barn. It's an extra twenty-four feet on the total length of the building. Along with that, there were some other site tweaks that we had to do to accommodate the addition, or expansion, I should say. Minor tweaks to the driveways or cartways into each end of the building. Some small tweaks to the grading around the building itself and the stormwater management system, all of which will maintain compliance with current regulations. And then Linda, if you don't mind actually going over to the building plans, there was a couple tweaks just to the appearance of the building. Nothing major, but a couple additional gables that were added on to the front end of the building.
What page is that?
It's in the architectural drawing. And any, any one of the color. Thank you. You can see there that the gable on the left-hand side of the picture there was always on the building. Three additional gables that are a little bit smaller were added just to kind of help, you know, keep it a good-looking building and break up the front facade a little bit. Outside of that, we've reviewed the staff report. Obviously, take no exception to the one condition that was placed on it there. And at this time, I guess we can turn it over to you folks in the public and answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, any questions of the applicant by the board on this amendment to the site plan? You're not seeing any? All right, anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition, concern, or favor of this plan? Nope, how about on Zoom? Nobody on there?
I don't see anybody.
Okay, I guess at this point I give the board one more opportunity to ask any questions of the applicant while we're in the hearing. There appear to be any, so I think you're all set. I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, move on to the meeting. Yeah, pretty straightforward. It looks like they're making the building a little bigger and moving a few things. I don't have any concerns on my end. Anybody have any comments, questions, things they want to talk about?
A very quick comment, Mr. Chair, without being as well versed in the zoning and the planning regs. Is this something that could have potentially been adjudicated, I guess, be administrative action or did it require full rehearing by the board?
Yeah, we did look at it when it came in, but it was just above the threshold, so they had to come back to the planning board to get approval.
Okay.
Is just the, the lengthening, is the area change, basically?
Yeah, I think it was up around twenty percent.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Ten percent is the threshold.
Okay.
Thank, thank you for the clarification.
All right, any other comments? Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Ballinger?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to approve new business, project A twenty-two dash zero zero one five, property located at four and six Mountain Laurel's Drive. Finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO one ninety dash one forty-six D, subject to one stipulation as written in the staff report.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve by Mr. Ballinger. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. All right, thank you very much. All right, so moving on with our agenda, next up, we have the review of the tentative agenda to determine if we have any proposals, potential proposals of regional impact. Anybody had a chance to take a look at that agenda that's in the report?
I think it's.
We got two different ones, right?
March seven? Yeah.
Oh, here we go.
Yeah. There's three new ones at the top there, yeah? Somebody want to make a motion on that?
Mr. Barley?
Yes, I would make a motion, having reviewed the tentative agenda, that there are no proposals of regional impact.
All right, so you have that motion by Mr. Barley, that there are no current proposals of regional impact on the tentative agenda. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion by the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?
Abstained.
One abstention, sorry. Did you get that, Ms. Harper?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. And that motion passes. Okay, next up, we still, we have a referral from the Board of Aldermen on proposed O dash twenty-two dash zero one zero. This is a ordinance amendment, amending the land use code by adding provisions regarding synthetic nicotine and electronic smoking device sales and lounges. So we have somebody from the aldermanic board here to talk for us.
This is actually what I came for.
All right.
I just annoyed you with the other one, so no.
Ah, that's fine.
Thank you so much for, for hearing this. I'll try to keep this as brief as possible. The bottom line was, I was approached by a number of people because of an incident of, once again, following all the rules, all the land, land use rules and so on, and a, basically, a vape shop type thing was approved to be put in place next to a child burning center. The, all parties tried to do everything they could to mitigate that smoke and et cetera going over into the child areas. But because of the way the buildings were and so on, that couldn't happen. So truly, everybody is trying to do the right thing. So that brought up the question, let's change the land use code so that we can stop this from happening in the future. So through a lot of brainstorming with these parties that are involved, we, we kind of came up with this and working with Director, now Director Sullivan, we kind of put this together and so on. And basically, all it states, it puts a thousand-foot provision in that, that type of shop, so to speak, could not be within a thousand feet of these types of areas. Now, I, I'll be, I'm going to be a little vague here, mostly because of my, my lack of understanding of it. But I believe the, the way that it would work is that there's no, you cannot change it. It's going to be exactly that way. You can't give an exception to that particular thing next to a childcare facility. But I do believe, if I, if I read this correctly, that it can be waived for thousand-foot measurement, provided the applicant demonstrates that there are no negative impacts on the direct abutters neighborhood or city. If you go further down, it very specifically says that the planning board may not waive the one thousand-foot measurement if the facility directly abuts a school or youth-serving organization. Now, that was kind of one of the, the issues that had happened was that the planning board only notifies those physical abutters. And sometimes, the reason why we put the one thousand foot in is because sometimes there are maybe a school or a child daycare center that's already been there, but is, you know, forty feet away, but they don't abut, they don't touch it. So they don't get notified that this is happening and suddenly it's happened. So that's why this kind of came around. It kind of gives that provision. So it allows you to make a provision if they're further away, but not if they're directly attached to the particular property.
Got it.
So, and it does give some leeway, but not, but not to the ones that are physically abutting it. Because sometimes, like in the case that brought this about, there is nothing they can do to mitigate that flow of smoke and everything to where the children are playing. Any questions?
No, I, I think I understand it and maybe staff can weigh in too. So essentially, this ordinance is, is attempting to, to mitigate the situation where there's a sort of a, call it a smoke or vape shop or whatever, right next to a, a school or youth type organization. But if it's, if there's a gap between them and the, and the, you know, something else in between, then, you know, we do have the opportunity to look at it somewhat, right? That's how I'm reading it, yeah? Matt, do you have more that you want to clear? Yeah, yeah, please.
Matt Sullivan for the record. There is an additional provision included within the recommended zoning. And that is a, it's a concentration or proximity measurement between like classified uses, that being the synthetic tobacco vendors. And so there is a one thousand-foot proximity measurement included within this as well. The objective there being to limit the concentration of this sort of like use in one area. I am not saying in any way that this exists within the community today, but the objective is to limit them being in close proximity to one another. Certainly, the primary, I think, objective here, though, is to address abutting uses of child-oriented uses and nicotine sales or to synthetic nicotine sales. But there is also that other provision included within the recommended zoning.
Okay, and then the wording to me, it seems to address synthetic nicotine and electronic smoking devices. I mean, is, is that, does that address like literally like standard tobacco?
It's, it's a great question. I believe it does.
Tobacco, synthetic nicotine, right, in the C three?
Yep, I believe it does. I believe it does.
So that's already in there?
In the matrix table under C three, it's tobacco, synthetic nicotine, or electronic smoking devices sales and lounges.
Correct.
So it's all.
Correct.
Yeah, so this is just an add-on.
Tobacco comma, yep.
Yeah, I mean, it would just be weird if it didn't.
It, it does directly address that. That's a great question. It's an additive provision to what's in there already. Recognizing there are more products available today than were when the ordinance was initially drafted.
Yeah, okay. Dan, you got a question?
Yeah, so I'm confused by some of the proposed language. So it says, "The planning board may not waive the one thousand-foot measurement if the facility directly abuts a school or youth-serving organization." The one thousand-foot measurement is a separation from another like use. So, like in the case we had, something's proposed adjacent to the school, but there's not another like use within a thousand feet. That would be okay.
There are two thousand-foot measurements included. So if we just review the language and then within the first sentence, there's a thousand-foot proximity measurement between like uses. There's also a thousand feet from schools or youth-serving organizations. And so there are two thousand-foot buffers that are in place.
Got it.
But Dan, I'm not sure that addresses your question, so I'm not.
No, I guess I, I guess I'm confused by the fact that there's a thousand-foot measurement, but this is referencing a facility that directly abuts a school or youth organization. So you're saying it could directly butt it, but the planning board can't waive?
So the, the, the planning board.
You could have both things be true.
So the, the planning board has the ability to waive the thousand-foot measurement, both thousand-foot measurements. However, in, in granting a waiver, the one waiver it can't grant is when the facility will directly abut a youth-serving organization.
So we could, for example, provide a waiver that would allow the, the location to be within five hundred feet.
That's correct.
Of a school, as long as it didn't abut the school.
Across the street.
Well, yeah, can you remind us what the abut requirements are?
So, so it would.
What classifies as abutting?
So across, across the street would qualify as abutting, in my opinion.
And physically abutting, side by side, on the same side of the street.
Correct.
But there's also a density number in here that is essentially, you can't have two of them next to each other.
Correct.
Regardless of what's up.
Correct.
So it's, it's kind of like we do with gas stations, right? At the gas stations, we have the seven hundred, seven hundred-foot rule.
Exactly comparable to.
That's, that's the same concept, right?
Okay.
Alderman, Kathy?
I guess I misunderstood. I thought that the thousand-foot from the schools would always be in place no matter what. That is not correct.
No, the thousand-foot from the school can also be waived. So a linear measurement of six hundred, five hundred feet could be permitted, provided that they demonstrate those, the compliance with the waiver criteria, provided that it's not directly abutting.
Would it not be prudent to make that non-wavable if, I, I didn't, I didn't write the ordinance. I believe Alderman, Alderwoman Cleese had some involvement, nor no? Yeah, had some involvement. Was the general thrust to get these types of facilities away from schools or, or just to not have them cluttered in the same area?
The, I, I can't speak for the, for the, the lead drafter, but I certainly was involved in the process. But that was the, the initial contemplation of the ordinance. During discussions, further discussions with stakeholders, with involvement on this ordinance, we identified the use-to-use proximity as a secondary objective to the school objective.
So why then wouldn't you keep that original goal solid and not movable, but then move the, the like use one?
Yeah, great question. The simple answer is flexibility was key, I think, in contemplating this, particularly in more urban areas. And also respecting that there may be different, there may be different contexts and factors, whether it be whether you can actually get to a location. We're treating this as a crow flies, thousand feet. There may in fact be other. There may in fact be other factors when it comes to whether someone can access something, and so we were uncomfortable, I believe, and I want to allow Alderwoman Cle to substantiate this, but we were a bit uncomfortable having a hard and fast thousand feet, because we recognized that there may be unique contexts for some of these situations.
Is that like elevation or something?
Something, or, or lack of connecting streets or pedestrian ways, there may be something that actually makes access more challenging.
Yeah, a river. Yeah, yeah.
To, to add to what Director Sullivan said, I mean, the truth is, if this group had its way, and, um, they're, they're a group of incredible, um, caring people who, from nonprofits to so on, if they had their way, we wouldn't have these type of shops anywhere for even children to walk by. But the truth is, we can't tie our hands because we don't know all. So to say abutting is the most important, and to put the thousand feet in, but to give you all, you know, as the board, to know that, exactly the things that you said, there could be circumstances, they're so far away that they're not going to have any effect on, on that type of thing. We wanted to give you all the, that, because this is the, our, our brain source, so to speak. So we didn't want to tie your hands and, and so on. The key is to put this into place, to have to create a waiver, to have to at least have that discussion if it's within a thousand feet. And you all make the right choice, and I believe that you would do it, whatever that comes out, I think you would do it based on the appropriateness of and so on. So that's why we went with the, giving that wiggle room, but, but no wiggle room when it's two and a butter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ballinger?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just from a definitional standpoint, i- is, is youth-serving organizations explicitly defined? And I'm not trying to be coy, obviously, the intent was to define a school, but it doesn't say school, it doesn't say, um, like, is a McDonald's a youth-serving organization? Or, um, I'll let you answer, Mr. Sullivan.
Like, 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 like any good ordinance, uh, we consider both extreme specificity and explain, extreme flexibility, uh, and landed somewhere, I think, right in the middle of those two. And so we chose not to define youth-serving organization very strictly, Mr. Ballinger. What we did is provided examples, as you can see in the last line of the recommended language. Uh, to answer your question directly, and I hope this record opinion does not, uh, come back to bite me, but I would not consider McDonald's a youth-serving organization. Uh, I would think we would classify that as a restaurant, but certainly, uh, two things will have to happen here. Staff will need to identify whether a given organization is in fact a youth-serving organization, and staff will hide, have to identify whether the primary use of an entity is actually tobacco, synthetic nicotine sales. And we do that on, on an everyday basis. It is a subjective judgment, but the answer tends to be relatively clear in most situations.
And, um, I'm gonna...
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Just one quick follow-up.
Yeah?
Am I interpreting this correctly, in that this is going to be on applications moving forward? This, this could not be retroactively applied to recently heard cases, is that...
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Harper?
Just out of curiosity, would now be the time to add in language, should marijuana sales become legal, or would that be something we do after the fact, or you evaluate after the fact?
Certainly something we, we discussed. Um, and frankly, something that I resisted, I think, well, we, we don't aim to be reactive. We don't know enough about what regulations might be appropriate for recreational marijuana sales, and so I'll be, I'll be frank, that I recommend it against doing that at this point in time. Uh, that's very much something that we will look to the state and others for a model ordinance to base our regulations on, and we didn't feel comfortable, uh, sort of taking our own first step into the water of that, so we, we avoided it at this time.
Great. I was just curious if you discussed it, so thank you.
And I do think it will be appropriate at some point in time to strictly codify how we handle those uses, but now is not identified to be the appropriate time.
Mr. Hudson?
Uh, further to the specificity type argument or question, um, in the table, uh, is it considered that all those things listed under one thirty-seven are similar like uses? Cause there are, there is an or in there, and there's an and, and so I just want to clarify, if you had a, uh, electronic smoking, you know, uh, device sales business within five, five-hundred feet of a tobacco sales business, that would, that would, that would be precluded?
Mr. Hudson, you did buy me dinner this evening, but I didn't, that doesn't mean that you can pick apart my ordinance.
This is where I get to have fun.
No, I think it's, it's a great question. Um, so the way, my, my reading of this is that, uh, so let's just walk through what it suggests in one, one thirty-seven, so we're all, I think, on the same page. So the reading of this is tobacco, synthetic nicotine, or electronic smoking device sales and lounges. It's not an or as far as the actual use, it's an or as what the product is that's being used. And so I, I don't see, uh, to your point, I think if they're either retailing or you have an assembly use related to those three products, whether it be tobacco, synthetic nicotine, or electronic smoking devices, I believe you qualify under this use.
Thank you. Mr. Meehan?
So I'm just curious, uh, because I remember very clearly the discussion we had around a specific case, right? So it, it just strikes me as being, you know, you had noted not wanting to be reactive.
Hmm.
And here we are, coming up with a very technical, there's a thousand feet, but there's not a thousand feet to a speci... And it, doesn't it just seem very reactive to a case that we've already adjudicated, and now we're creating another layer of this that we're going to have to monitor for however long we have it?
I, I think it's both reactive and proactive. Um, I think we have not had to deal with a situation where we've had these two types of uses in close proximity to each other as part of prior applications. Uh, I think we saw that, we witnessed the conversation, we heard the public comments around it. We certainly are being reactive by suggesting this amendment, but I think it's very possible that a comparable, a comparable application could become, you know, could be coming to this board in the near future. Uh, these uses are, are more pervasive throughout the community, certainly childcare uses are more prevalent within the community, and so I think the likelihood of this situation coming to you again i- is very, very high, and I think we should be as prepared as possible for that. So I would acknowledge it is reactive, but I would like to think it's rea, it's proactive as well.
Thank you.
All the woman Cle?
May I comment to, uh, Mr. Meehan's, um, comment? Um, yes, I, I, I say everything is reactive to some, to some point. Um, when we were talking about the parking, and we talked about that the, the land use says one-point-five, it absolutely does. The, the applicants at that time meet all the criteria, and there would be no reason for you to have said no, which is kind of what I was saying, even though it was that, you had no reason to say no. Um, I'm also a state rep, and one of the things that we learn is that there are unintended consequences. We put laws out there, we put rules out there, and when something doesn't go right, we have to react. We have to either try to fix it or undo it. You know, it's one of those things, and that's kind of what this is doing. Because of the, the case that you're speaking with, and all parties really tried to, to work very hard to, to help with that, so I have no negative things to say about that, so please understand that. But it did bring up that conversation. It did bring up that point. So as, as Director Sullivan has said, yes, you're being reactive to something that happened, but you're being proactive so it doesn't happen again. So in, in, in all cases, he, he, he put it perfectly, so, thank you.
Maria? Uh, Mr. Hirsch?
A question about the, uh, term primary use. Uh, how does that, how is that going to work? For example, if a convenience store has seventy-five percent of their square footage dealing with soda and, and ice pops, and twenty-five percent with tobacco products, but it's a predominance of their business and their profits of the tobacco?
Yeah.
I mean, how do we, how do we define that? Is it like areas, a convenience store, for example?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question. Many, many ordinances across the state and across the country are very specific about what, what is designated as a primary use. They use either, as, as you're referencing, a square footage definition, or a, a percentage of sales that go out of the door. Um, we, we don't do that, and again, I think that relies on the principle of not wanting to be too specific, and wanting to be a bit more flexible in how we make that determination, and so it's very subjective in the city of Nashua. Uh, I think it's, you know, in the words of a Supreme Court case, at some point, we sort of know it when we see it, what the primary use is. Um, we tend to have a conversation with the owner or operator about what their goods are that they're selling, what the layout of the store will be, and gather what the predominant use really is. Uh, one thing that's come up specifically as part of this conversation is, uh, either grocery stores or convenience stores selling products that are identified within this. Uh, in both of those cases, I would not say that those are their primary uses, they are a larger retail vendor. Uh, I think it's differentiated when you go into what's clearly a smoke shop, where the predominant good that is being retailed there is in fact a synthetic product or tobacco product. So I, I tend to believe this is really a, we know it when we see it, kind of determination, and that's how we currently treat primary uses within the city of Nashua land use code.
So, so a convenience store with fifty percent tobacco products, that would be very subjective decision?
It would...
Is there no qualitative, no absolute standard?
It would be a judgment call. I think fifty percent is one of the things we'll have to really wrap our heads around. I think that may be, in fact, a primary use. Um, we are going to err on the side of being more conservative in the application of our land use code, and so we, if, if we have a question of judgment, we're likely going to lean in the direction that provides the maximum public notification and may result in the maximum process for an applicant. And so if we're unsure, it will come to you as a conditional use permit under this ordinance.
Mr. Hudson?
I'm ju, I'm just curious, what other, what other types of uses do we have as distance restriction? I know gas station is our one, right?
We have only the one that I'm aware of, and that is a seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot measurement between gas stations. I'm not aware of any others within the land use code.
Alright, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
The only other question I had, Matt, is, um, you know, just looking at the, not that we want to make more changes to the code, but, you know, the general industrial, it seems odd that that's not grouped with the conditional uses, should... I, 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 I guess I'm, we definitely have GI areas, I mean, the, is retail just not allowed in, in GI?
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. Yeah, we, we, uh, Deputy Director Fock and I had some discussions about this, and potentially broaden it to even the, the LB district, as it were.
Yeah.
Uh, and ultimately, we found that extending it would likely not be appropriate, based on the sort of broader purpose of those zoning districts.
Yeah.
The great example being GI, where that's really a predominantly industrial zone, and we don't naturally encourage retail uses within it.
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, this particular, I would think that's more of a discussion for the complete land use rewrite...
Right, right.
Kind of process, but then this...
Specific example, maybe, but I just wanted to make sure that was the thinking.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah. Anybody else? Okay. Thanks. Um, so, so with these, uh, just a reminder for the board, um, the intent of this is a, um, is a consideration by the planning board, and, and our role in this is to provide either a, uh, a favorable recommendation of the proposed, uh, ordinance, in this case, amendment, or a, you know, unfavorable, or a favorable with, you know, recommended comments, or something like that. So we're not an approval body for this, but we are a recommendation provider, so. So anybody, so a motion would be in that language, so. Anybody want to make a motion on this? Mr. Peterson?
Yep. Yeah, there you go.
I'd like to make a motion that the planning board refer the proposed ordinance O-dash-twenty-two-dash-zero-one-zero back to the Board of Alderman with a positive recommendation.
Okay. So we have that, uh, motion by, um, Mr. Peterson for a positive referral recommendation for this proposed, uh, ordinance amendment. Does anybody have a second on that? Second by Alderman Cathy. Any further discussion by the board?
Can I speak too?
My second?
Yeah, yeah.
Support. Uh, I know I'll probably get to speak about this at the Board of Alderman, but, um, I had a lot of conversations with, uh, Mr. Sullivan about this, because I tend to be very laissez-faire with regulations, but as a parent who has seen vaping in particular get very, very popular in schools and other facilities, I feel like sometimes we have to protect our community and, um, build up protections for what we want our city to be like, and this is the one area where the, the planning board gets to be a little subjective and more helpful to the community. Um, and so that's why, um, I'm, I'm in favor of this, I'm okay with adding on these stipulations because I think ultimately, we're creating the best good out of this, out of the situation and, and doing what we can. Um, I'm okay with it being reactive, sometimes we have to do that, um, because we don't see things coming, and then we had that situation come up, and now we're here. So I, I would just encourage full support of this up to the Board of Alderman.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Meehan?
Yeah, I would, I would just like to acknowledge that and, and note that there's a really positive intention, and I, I think, one of the things that I have thought about a lot is, um, Alderman Cle, is just remarkable in the way she represents her ward, in the way she's present. I'm in her ward, and we've had some issues with my own neighborhood, and she's just on it right away, and I really do appreciate her work, I think it's remarkable. And I, I really, I struggle with the accretion of these minuscule stipulations over time, and it's hard for me to see how this really is going to have an impact over the long haul.
Okay. Alright, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Oh, were you on the...
Were you late?
Which one were you on the...
Oh, I was no. Yeah, I was...
You're a no.
I'm a no.
Okay, so we have all, uh, yes is one, no, got it, so. Uh, any abstentions? No abstentions?
Okay.